Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of December 19th, 2017. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like we have a full board this evening. David Samuel is not here. We have a new member, Dennis Page. Dennis, welcome to the planning board. This is Dennis's first time, so we'll try and be as kind as we can.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis appeared before the Board of Selectmen Monday night.
Oh, good. Very good. And how did that go?
Excellent. The Board approved his...
Okay. Wonderful. Well, welcome aboard and be of asset to the planning board here. Okay. We'll have a roll call of members present. Michael Crowdo, Chair.
Joe Blanchett, Clerk.
Brent Lemire, Selectmen's Rep.
Tyler Perrin, Member.
Kimberly Queenan, Vice Chair.
Dennis Page, Alternate.
Public input. Is there any members of the public that wish to speak this evening? Hearing none, I will close the public input. The first item on the agenda this evening is a sign application for Kalawakort Page Road. Is the applicant present? Okay. Would you mind coming forward? You can have a seat. Introduce yourself and...
My name's Rick Charbonneau. One of the managing partners of Kalawakort.
Okay. Very good. Well, welcome. I don't know if the Board has had the opportunity to review the application. This is actually a public hearing, I should say, so it is based on pursuant to RSA 91A too. So this meeting is public. So the sign application is within the Highway Commercial District, is what I understand. Did you want to give us a little background, what you're proposing or...
We built it forty... I think you have a picture of what the...
Yes, we do.
We built forty-two townhouses that we're going to be renting, and we just want to put a sign out front.
Okay.
You should have the location of the sign as well, you know, on your site.
Okay.
How'd you get the name?
So I would assume this application meets all of the requirements?
Yes. Do we have all... We have all the application materials, I assume, the seals, signatures.
Fee was paid. The fee was paid.
The fee was paid. So pretty much, I guess what we can do now is to look to accept the application for completeness. So I will entertain a motion at this time. Someone can entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to you to say.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
I have a question, just some clarification. I believe it's technically accurate. I don't have a problem with that. I did drive down there today, and I think the sign is going to be complimentary. That's, again, not an issue. When I was leaving, the town homes and was trying to take a left, I did... I personally felt I'm in an all-wheel-drive car and I'm tall. I just want to understand, looking at the picture here and the requirements, that if I'm up six feet on the ground because of my car and we have this sign, I don't know how much clearance it would be for me looking.
You're not going to look underneath it. It's going to be set back enough.
How far back? Is that based on the map here roughly? You can bring them... It's attachment four. Yeah, there it is right there. I just... I sent you a picture today. I just want to make sure that it's in that red area up there on the corner.
Yeah, it's over here.
If you could zoom in. You can see where he's pointing where the sign's going to be. I just want to make sure it's a safety issue for all seasons when there's snow. That's my only concern here, when you're taking a left.
There's a stop by there and a setback behind the stop by.
Right.
Can I show you the picture, Jen, that I just sent?
Yeah.
I just think maybe some of the trees, and they look like they're going to come down anyway because they've been cut.
So there's that.
So the sign is there, that area you have right there. Yep.
Stop by is right here.
Yep.
So it'll be... It'll be in front of there.
I just want to make sure people are safe. Can you... This is what I saw when I was trying to take the left. So again, if there's...
It's going to sit like right here.
So if I'm in a car and I'm going to take a left, I'm just not sure of this picture how high. If I'm six feet up, is that... Do I have like a two-foot view if there's like snow clouds?
I don't want you to look under it, so I... So I want to back far enough so when you're sitting there, you're not looking at the sign.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I just want to make sure it's safe because I'm looking at the sight reg here for all seasons, safe sight distance. I just want to make sure we meet that, that's all. And just cutting some of the dead trees in the back would do it, or moving it a foot. I just want to make sure that I'm not an engineer, that that is correct.
Even if it's in between the two lower.
It's between the tree and the pole, but probably more towards the tree.
Towards the... There were three.
You've got at least 12 feet back.
Yeah. Yeah.
So if there was two or three feet of snow, you know, would we... Would they still be okay, is all I'm saying, when they're going to just try to look left to turn to come up?
I think if you're back...
You'd probably have a worse problem seeing off the snowbank.
That's what I mean. I want to make sure it's fitting all seasons.
But the sign wouldn't be the one. It'd be the snowbank problem.
Yeah, I would say if you're in this area, back this way, I mean, you should be fine.
That's all. I just want to make sure. Like I said, it's technically accurate.
Yep.
And it can be stamped now. That's... But again, I just want to make sure to protect the town. All seasons, we think that that left turn out of there would be okay with less two feet of snow and as a plow would go by.
We're not going to put the sign in there to interfere with sight distance.
No, I agree.
Because we have to have sight distance, so it doesn't interfere with sight distance.
And I saw the electrical pole there, too. That's just my concern. I just want to point it out.
Okay. All right. Well, getting back, what we have to do first is we have to accept the application for its completeness. That's really a paper exercise. Then what we can do is we can go into the approval process. I know you kind of... We kind of put the cart before the horse.
Sorry, discussion.
But that's okay. I know. I understand. So I'm going to ask at this time, there is a motion on the table to accept the application for its completeness. I had a second. We had discussion. All those in favor of approving or accepting the application for completeness signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. One, two, three, four, five. Motion passes six, zero, zero.
Actually, point of clarification. I think we're going both going the same place. Dennis hasn't been appointed to vote tonight.
That's right. We should have.
I would say as a first night, you may not want to vote and just observe. You can vote technically if you're appointed because we do have a board member who is absent tonight.
Normally, what we do is we appoint the alternate at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes.
If you're comfortable with that.
I was under the impression I did not vote today, so.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So motion passes five, zero, zero. Okay. Now we can go into the approval process.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve to get it on the table for discussion.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the sign application.
Aye, second.
I have a second discussion. Did you want to add anything else?
Just like if everybody thinks it's safe based on past work in the town.
I think it's fine. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I think it's set back enough that I think it won't be an issue, especially seeing from the pictures that we have here. I think it's... I think it's far enough back that it won't be a concern.
Personally, being here for a while, knowing the applicant, he's very well... He's quite familiar with the regulations. I mean, I'm confident that any safety issues certainly would be addressed by him.
Okay. Well, if there's no further discussion, we'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstained? Motion passes five, zero, zero. You are all set.
Okay. Thanks.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
I don't think you had any.
I love that there was public.
Keep moving.
The next item on the agenda, I have Andy Pearlman extension for Autumn Circle.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. I am a former resident of the town, Andy Pearlman, for Hudson Pearson... Pearson Hudson Limited Liability Company. And I'm here... I don't even know why I'm here, to be honest. I'm here in a kind of a housekeeping manner to... With respect to this project. And just real quick, I'm going to... I don't know what you have before you, but I'm going to hand out just the overall subdivision plan.
So you have a paper before you. It's a mystery to your audience what you folks are looking at on your round talks. We trust it has something to do with the planning board, not... Ross. No, I hope so.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a project on the Charles Bancroft Highway that is a split town, not just a split zone, but a split town project. Most of the... All of the infrastructure is in Hudson, and we have, I think, five lots that are in Litchfield, just below where the Circumvirage Highway is about to break ground.
Wait a minute. I heard that 30 years ago.
Forty. That's why I moved because I couldn't wait anymore.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, back in 2014, we went through the permitting process with both the Litchfield Zoning Board and you folks on the planning board, your predecessors, the Town of Hudson zoning and the Town of Hudson planning as well. In 2015, I was before this board and received an extension on the permitting during... For an additional year. During that time and a little bit thereafter, the developer, Pearson Hudson, has spent over $300,000 on the site. When you drive by the site, you see great big piles of dirt. You see some chunks of interest, concrete infrastructure out there today, and the project is moving slower than we had hoped, but it is... It is still moving. And what happened, what prompted me to come before you tonight was that the Hudson planner, the new planner in town, George Tabarche, he made a determination that the project was going to lapse. It was going to expire. The Hudson approvals were going to go by the wayside as of this month. And we, we being the owner and Keach Nordstrom, the project engineer and myself, we took issue with that, saying that's not true. The project is vested because we put almost half of the cost of the infrastructure and the work into the site. And he, George Tabarche, the planner in Hudson, takes a different position. So on January 10th, I'm going before the Hudson Planning Board to either confirm that the project is vested and we're good, or get an extension, an additional extension from Hudson. Given that the infrastructure is in Hudson and we just have lots in Litchfield, it occurred to me that, I'm not sure what I'm requesting of you. Initially, I requested an extension of the permitting time, but as I got deeper into this and really was reviewing this and had Pat Coburn from Keach Nordstrom pull together the costs and the work completed to date, I just wanted to come before you to, A, give you an update, and B, get the board's consensus, the board's thoughts on whether this project is indeed vested, which I believe it is because we have... Because of the amount of these significant construction and investment put onto the site. Or if not, then I would formally request an extension. But I don't even think I need to request an extension because I believe I won't speak for Joan, but I believe Kevin, and speaking for Joan, I believe they would agree with it. The project has the significant and substantial construction and investment such that the project is vested as far as Litchfield is concerned. Hudson has all the infrastructure. Hudson may have some more questions for me, but given that it was intentional that the road was all in Hudson, you know, we feel we should be good with Litchfield. So with that, I imagine I'm requesting just a consensus of the board that the board doesn't have any issues with this project at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. Being a newbie for planning and development, vested versus non-vested, would that mean you would... If this board would determine that your project is not vested, that means you would have to come back before the board for all the approvals again?
That's correct. That's correct. And nothing has changed... Nothing has changed with respect to this plan, and while there may have been tweaks to the Litchfield zoning ordinance, I don't think there's anything of substance that would affect these lots.
So, okay.
So...
Now, the only thing, as I'm looking at this, there is actually not one lot that's totally in Litchfield anyway.
That's correct.
You know, all of them are divided, and I'm thinking, wow. So if this... This board has determined that for the lots or for the parts of the lots that are in the town, that everything is appropriate, and nothing's changed.
No.
Then, yeah, okay. That helps me because I don't know that... Why would you would have to come back?
Okay.
Personally, I mean, I'm... Again, education for me.
Can I give you, for the board edification, would you like a two-minute primer on vesting?
Sure.
Okay. I had a feeling. Now, I know all you... I know folks on my right are all well versed, so this is all for you, member.
Boy, assume you've...
Well, that's a very good question, and the answer to that question is the New Hampshire Supreme Court treats common law vesting on a case-by-case basis. So it's not necessarily 20%. It could be in certain circumstances, but... So here it is. In New Hampshire, when you get a project approved, a subdivision approved, in order to preserve that project and protect that project from subsequent zoning changes, the developer, the owner of the project, has to get in the ground and have substantial construction on-site, all right? And there are two ways we can vest a project, vest a project from subsequent zoning changes. You can do it under New Hampshire common law, which is where we are with this particular project, or you can do it under the New Hampshire statutes. 674-39 says that if the applicant gets approved, records a plan, and begins active and substantial completion within a two-year window, within that two-year window from approval, then that project is vested. That project is protected from subsequent zoning changes for a five-year period. And then if the developer reaches substantial completion within that five-year period, that project is vested forevermore, all right? So that's the statutory route, 674-39. The common law route analyzes applications and cases on a case-by-case basis, and the standard is whether upon reliance on a permit properly issued by a municipality, a developer and applicant invest substantial construction on-site and not acquisition of the property, not engineering, not wetlands mapping, actual shovels hitting the ground, bodies on-site working, then that project is likewise vested from subsequent zoning changes. So the New Hampshire Supreme Court has said, and time and time again, that the vesting analysis is done on a case-by-case basis, and they... And it ranges from, you know, someone bringing a case to the Supreme Court will say, you know, I spent $100 on this project, on this multimillion-dollar project, therefore I'm vested, and the Supreme Court said, no, you're not. But alternatively, someone says, I've put 50% of the infrastructure in, I'm vested, and the Supreme Court has said, yes, that's true. Here, you know, we believe, given what Keach Nordstrom laid out from the original bond analysis and then the work to date, we're at 40%, 48% rather, of the investment in the site work investment into the site, we believe we're vested. So that's why I just want to confirm with the town. We're making the same pitch to Hudson in early January. But again, I wanted to come before you folks with an update, and given that the lots are the infrastructures in Hudson, I didn't think that Litchfield would have an issue with this, but I just wanted to bring this to you tonight.
Jen?
So just kind of for additional information, in May of 2015, Litchfield did amend its subdivision regulations to be consistent with RSA 674-39, which is the state vesting statute. At the time that this application came in and was reviewed, what was in the subdivision regulations was not consistent with state statute. State statute had been amended several times over a short period of time. Additionally, at that time in 2015, the town adopted a definition of active and substantial development, which you can do under RSA 674-39. What Andy is referring to, though, in having the statutory definition in the common law is when this application came in and was reviewed, we did not have a definition of active and substantial at that time.
That's correct.
So that puts Andy in a little...
Mr. Chairman, so would that change anything that's been done before?
I don't think so.
So just more background of what there is and what the standard is, but I...
So it only clarified it for the board?
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, but again, where all of the site improvements are in Hudson, the real question is, is, you know, how do you determine active and substantial in Litchfield when all it is is the back lots? So...
And that's why I didn't... Honestly, talking with Joan, I didn't think this board would have an issue with it. You know, my battle, so to speak, will be with the Town of Hudson, not so much Litchfield, but again, I just want to bring it to you, and have you ask me any questions and just confirm where we are.
Okay. Very good. I appreciate that.
So, Mr. Chairman, what... So you would... Would you be looking for an affirmation of the board's previous...
You know, Brent, it would... I think procedurally it would be inappropriate to take a vote on an extension, but perhaps a consensus of the board that what I'm presenting does present to Litchfield as a vested project.
Well, certainly, if there are shovels in the ground, as you said, there needs to be, and if that's the case, then I think that most likely are vested under the circumstances. But as you said, it's a case-by-case basis, so.
But wouldn't that beg at least a vote for consensus?
Yes.
So what we can do is we can...
Wouldn't be a formal extension to a date certain. I think that would be procedurally inappropriate, but just so I can walk out of here and say, we have the consensus of Litchfield, and we can...
Okay.
And then I can take it up with Hudson. Hudson's the real issue.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move.
Okay.
That we offer Mr. Pearlman a consensus that the project is vested from our board.
I second it.
I have a motion. I have a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstained? Motion passes five, zero, zero.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Merry Christmas to all of you.
And to you and your families.
See you again.
All right. I'm sure.
See you in February.
I think I have everything updated and posted here for the updated versions, although I did not download them to my computer. So let me do that really quickly so that...
It's very possible.
They're...
I think it'd be easier.
Yeah, we can zoom better if they're downloaded, as opposed to doing it through the Google site. Sorry. Should have done that in advance.
I'm thirsty.
December, December. Bear in mind, there are like individual sheets, so if you want me to pull up a single sheet to... Just let me know which one.
I think the overall, the 01 is probably vested.
Okay. All right. I think I have them all.
Well, the next, I should say, the next item on the agenda for this evening is Thorough Properties LLC submitting a site plan application at 16 Colby Road, tax map 20 lot 29 to construct an 8,000 square foot, single-story warehouse. The intent is to store low-hazard building materials. This application was accepted for completeness on 11/7/2017 by the Litchfield Planning Board. The applicant has returned this evening to continue with the approval process. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you introduce yourself?
Ah, yes. My name is Tobin Farwell, Farwell Engineering Services. So, yep, last we met, we were sent off with revisions to the plans and additional informations, which we submitted to NRPC as well as Lou Karen, and we have had some minor comments back. We have submitted additional waiver requests, so we now have a revised list of waivers that we're seeking relief from. I guess that is where we're at. I'm happy to discuss if you want to go through the changes to the plan.
Well, yeah, if you could provide us what you've done in terms of finalizing everything, I guess, or for the conditional approval.
Okay. There was a request to show snow storage on the site plan, which we have done. We've provided a stormwater operation and maintenance manual. We've provided drainage calculations to verify that the drainage swale can adequately accommodate the volume of water. We've provided landscape information for the front area for softening of the building. We've discussed with the fire chief. The fire chief originally wanted a 20-foot-wide access road. We are at a 16... He agreed to a 16-foot-wide emergency access road. Regarding the building, we've got a request for the... Which one? The building orientation, roof forms and materials. We're providing a breakup of that long 80-foot section with vertical bands and also flatboard and cedar shake above the E's line. There was also some minor changes to the plans of putting a box around the details. And I believe that's it.
Okay. Jen, is there anything that you'd like to add?
I'm going to toggle over here. I'll toggle over here. Just, so you all know, all of the additional information that the applicant provided is uploaded to your Google site, including the updated plans, the drainage analysis, and the inspection and maintenance plan. There is also what Mr. Farwell just went through, the list of revisions that have been made in response to prior comments are articulated in the PDF file labeled applicant December first seventeen letter and additional waivers. So, that document does walk through all of those items, just if you want to have that up in front of you. In terms of additional comments and concerns, I'm going to stare at my, all the text on my screen. I'll just kind of quickly go through the staff report. In terms of the various waiver requests, we had no concerns on the waivers as submitted at this point with, with the additional information that we've received, both at the prior hearing and in subsequent communications. So, that is all of item two on the staff technical report. Item three on the staff technical report in regards to the conditional use permit, that is just, again, a reiteration of what the requirements were for your review and the basis for approval. And again, there were no concerns. Lou has affirmed, the engineer has affirmed that the drainage calculations do what they need to do, and so that solves the outstanding items there.
Wary, can I follow along? I guess I was, I had your, I have this document, but I...
Which date?
This is the latest one.
Yeah, okay.
Dated, December nineteenth?
Yeah, fourteen.
No, that's a meeting date. Where would I find the, this had the latest comments?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. So, what was number, you were discussing number three?
Number three, that was the comment on the Aquafor Protection...
Oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry.
...conditional use permit.
All right, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Just continuing along, this was just a minor question, definitely a minor item. You had mentioned at the prior hearing that there are fire hydrants within five hundred feet, but we didn't talk about where exactly they were, and if they are within kind of the view extent of the plan, it'd be worth just adding them on to the sheet, just so we know that there is that...
Based on, I talked to Renee about this, and apparently they are next to Roberts Road, is that, is that correct?
Okay.
There's two of them, so I can add them.
Yeah, I just, if they're, yeah.
They won't be, they'll be approximate, they aren't survey locations.
That's okay. I think just knowing that, you know, having it documented that there is, that there are fire hydrants in the vicinity.
Okay, yep.
You'd already said that there were, just want to make sure they're documented. Yeah, check the box. Okay, oh, so then there was the conversation, this was a conversation item, that gravel area that still looks very attractive as a parking. I'm trying to think which sheet shows it better.
Yeah, certainly the next, the site.
The site, yeah. Yes. Okay, bear with me, because I'm slow to navigate here on the screen. And this is not a huge discussion item, just like a... So, at the, at the last meeting, we were talking about this corner here that is a gravel area. It's currently a gravel area, it's to remain a gravel area, but part of your variance conditions were that there were to be no parking here, which is noted on, on the plan. And there's the stone wall, and now you've, you've added some, some landscaping. The question is, I, not so much folks coming to see you, but if you've got someone who's stopping, you know, driving down the road, and that's the right side of the road from them, and they decide to pull off and park there and run across the street, I mean, you can't stop them from parking there.
Right.
But on the other hand, how do we make sure that people aren't using that very attractive to park space for parking?
If they have a flat tire, I should hope that they feels comfortable in parking there.
Fair enough, fair enough, for a safety thing, but just to make sure we're following the spirit of that zoning thing.
Okay.
Isn't that used as their storage area anyway?
It's snow storage.
Yeah, snow.
This area here.
Because, but they have other stuff stored there now.
No, it's, it is used as a parking for the tenants of the, of the rental building.
Yeah, because they're changing the, they're changing...
Which is going to be...
I see.
So, more maybe for the town to think about is, does the town want to post this is no parking along the side of the road?
It's absolutely up to the town. Do you want to put signs in there that say, no parking?
You know, is there, do you, and it's just a...
Why would you worry about that? I mean, education-wise.
Because the zoning board said it was a condition of granting them this, the variance, that there was to be no parking in this area.
But for what, anyway? I mean, there's nothing to park for, anyway.
I agree. There's no entrance, the entrance is out back.
Yeah.
There's no, no reasonable person to park it.
Well, I think it's in keeping with the zoning decision, I think, is what we're...
And just kind of making sure we're following the...
But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but...
So, the intent of the zoning is met by, there's a note on the plan. If there really, somebody complains, it is absolutely true, and the code enforcement officer can come down and enforce the zoning that has been approved. But I, I'm against putting signs there, no parking, which nobody's going to park there anyway, it's just sign pollution, in my mind, but it is absolutely, I'm at the will of the planning board, and whatever you guys decide.
And, and my job is to point out those things that for you as a town, from an administrative process, do you want to deal with, and so, and trying to minimize that administrative burden upon the town. And so, one way to minimize the administrative burden of potentially having to get the phone call of, there's somebody parked out here that shouldn't be here, can you come tow them, would be to put a sign out there that says, no parking. Whether it's warranted, that is the point for the conversation tonight.
Is that private property?
It's private property.
Yes.
Then why would the town worry about parking on private property?
Will there be a small sign directing them to where the entrance is?
No. Well, is there one now? I, I don't think there's one.
Why would they have to be, don't you?
Yeah, this is not, this is not a public, you know, people don't come here.
In the front of the other building?
I, I mean, I, I mean, I...
If...
You won't want me here probably anymore, but, I mean, I just, common sense to me is, there is no reason to put a no parking sign there at all.
And again, I raise things just for you guys to discuss.
And I appreciate that.
And it's, you need to decide whether it's warranted or not. I go through and say, okay, here's what the regulations say, here's what the zoning board has said, have we, you know, have we met this to the fullest extent required? If there's a point for discussion, I flag it for discussion. And some things may not be necessary.
I can just see a no parking sign getting whacked somehow by a snowplow, and that'll be the end of that, and it was up and down, and then...
What does the other members of the board feel? I mean...
Is there a light there at all, like a...
No.
There's no light there. The only reason this way would maybe...
There's a utility, utility bulb, but...
Maybe park there at night or something, I don't know why they would do that.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a big, kid parking spot.
I know the area, I live up in there, and there's just no reason to even work.
Okay.
Personally, that's my own opinion.
That's fair.
I, I agree.
Well, I mean... Is that a fence? What is that dark line?
That's a stone wall, little...
Oh, that's pretty clear.
I mean, in the winter, if you've got a pile of snow there, it's going to be pretty obvious.
We're meeting the zoning requirements by what you did on the chart.
And in the spring, with the mud, it'll be even more obvious.
We're meeting the zoning requirements by what you added to the chart, so we're honoring the zoning requirements.
And as you said, it's noted on the plan.
That's right. Yep.
As long as the, you know, everyone's... Okay.
Item six, these are just housekeeping note corrections, just, you know, making sure plan revision dates are noted, items are, you know, everything's in the legends, there's some, some numbering that's off in the overall plan sheet, but none of these should be, you know, a couple typos, none of these are...
And you, by saying correct business name, the, the business name is Optimum Building Systems, but the owner is Thorough Properties. Do you just want everything to have the, the deed owner on there? Is that what your intent is by that?
Because the documents had Optimum Building Solutions.
Oh, you got the old one, it should be Systems.
Okay, I had Systems handwritten on.
Oh, okay.
On the version that I received.
Sure, sure.
So, that's all that one is.
All right, all right.
So, just making sure that the, the corrected version is the one that's in the file.
Okay, absolutely.
So, if that's actually, I don't know, Joan, what you have in, on the file?
I printed it off the site.
You, so she printed what's off the site, did you submit hard copies to the, to Joan?
Yes, Renee did.
Okay.
Renee did, so I, supposedly everybody was right, we built, copied, seven copies, and Lou and NRPC.
Lou, yeah, he had Lou's and NRPC's address, and I was like, I don't need, but...
And from that batch, what I received said, solutions, not systems.
Okay. Because Renee caught it, I corrected it, I thought he would have sent out the corrected one.
Oh, I think may, well, maybe...
But either way, we, now that I know what you're talking about, I'm on it.
All right, like I said, most of these items under six, or all of these things under six are just...
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping.
Yep.
Tidying things up. Item seven was just kind of making sure that we completely followed up on everything from the fire department. We did hear back from the fire department that confirmed that the sixteen-foot access lane was adequate. There were a couple other things, though, from that original letter from the fire department that we wanted to just make sure that they responded to or signed off on, so I posed back to the fire department to confirm that the twelve-foot separation was adequate with the one foot, with the one-hour fire rated walls, did hear back from them this morning that that is fine. And the, the only item that they responded back was to, and I've added it to the site this afternoon, along with what we could do as just an additional condition of approval as a plan note, and that was simply to say, switch pieces of paper, find it somewhere, that, add a note, just to add a note, that the twelve-foot gravel road that runs behind the small building shall meet the NFPA standard...
Twelve feet.
And support, huh?
Why does it say twelve feet? You meant sixteen?
Was it supposed to be sixteen there, and I typed fast?
Oh, no, twelve feet of separation between the buildings.
Sixteen-foot road.
Yeah.
I'm going based on what I received from the fire department this morning.
Yeah. So, this is just, so, yeah, twelve feet between the, are we talking about the access road or the separation?
Honestly, I was asking him about the gravel road, I believe, what was my question?
Sixteen feet, right, with the gravel road.
Yeah, he's got sixteen.
Right, I had asked about the sixteen-foot, whether the, while the sixteen-foot width was okayed by the fire department, the letter said it also needed to be cleared and paved. So, yes, this should be sixteen foot, he typed twelve.
Right.
Okay, so, the response to that particular question was that it's okay to be gravel so long as it can support the sixty-four thousand pound truck. So, that was, we can correct that.
I have some comments from Kevin when you're done.
Okay, all right, I do now have the comments from Kevin, and I think that was seven. And eight was just any other comments if we had received them, so I will pass.
Kevin and I had extensive discussion about the separation of the buildings, the old building and the new building. His opinion is it's not a planning board issue, that it should comply with the IBC International Building Code. When they bring the building plan in, he will make sure that it has the appropriate firewall and has the appropriate separation. My argument was, Kevin, if they can't get the twenty feet on the plan, then what are you doing? Then it is a site plan issue.
It is a site plan issue.
He keeps insisting that it's an international building code issue, that he's going to make them comply with IBC. Building code will dictate the separation, he said.
I, I would say to that end, that what the planning board's duty is, is to make sure that the site plan, the configuration, the layout of the site works and meets safety standards, that you as a town have an obligation to get a fire truck to the site and be able to protect you as, as a property owner and business. And so, that's part of what you need to do as, as the planning board. But I would also agree that in terms of confirming whether or not it meets specific IBC requirements, that's a building code thing, but you need to make sure that that fire truck can get in there.
And, and, Joan, you know that if there is an issue there, you contact the fire chief, because Kevin now works for the fire department.
Right, right.
And if there is an issue, that will be handled through the fire department.
Kevin was going to send me something this afternoon, I'll check and see if he did.
So, I think, I mean, I think the question comment from Kevin is more that perhaps we have more noted on sheet O1 than we need to?
Yeah, I, I went ahead and put the code narrative on the sheet, which says that, you know, it is less than twenty feet, therefore, one-hour fire rating is required, just to...
And that's the bottom line that you guys need as an assurance, is that if you, if your distance between the buildings is closer than that twenty feet, you need that assurance that that one-hour firewall will be provided, so that the twelve hour, the twelve-foot width is permissible. That's the bottom line of what you need as a planning board for site, site plan review.
And that's been presented.
And that's been presented, and you've provided, I think, more notes, that I think that's what Kevin is responding to, is that...
Right, isn't that, you can do it with the two-hour wall on the new building, rather than rebuilding the old one and putting one-hour fire, you know, so there's, there's definitely building issues that will be worked out, but... Right. Site-wise, it will not change, and then...
So, what is the separation between buildings?
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet. And, and I would say that whether you keep the full building code narrative as, as it is, or it gets boiled down to saying that you can have the twelve feet so long as it's fire-rated, that's kind of the, the bottom line here.
Okay.
But note number four there. I mean, basically, it all fits together.
Yeah, all right. I try and avoid changes, I think, if there's anything incorrect, I'm willing to change it, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I think that everything, all of our concerns have been addressed personally, as far as I can see from all these things.
Okay.
They even went above and beyond and did the landscaping, which I'm happy about. So, definitely, I'm not sure if anybody else has anything?
Right, so we need to deal with the waiver requests?
Correct, that is the next issue. So, what we're going to be doing now is, we're going to be voting on the waiver requests first, and then the entire application will file approval. Does anybody else have any questions, board? Anything, no, yes?
Was this abstain a street address from the deputy chief? What was that one about?
It's a standard.
Oh, is it done? I guess it is, it has a check mark.
This is a new building.
Okay, so, do they have a new street address for them?
Part of the fire chief's letter, originally.
All right. So...
Do you take the waiver request as a group?
Well, we discussed a lot of this at the last meeting that we had on the site plan, and we kind of went over a lot of what those requests required and so forth. And then the applicant was going to go back and basically, you know, clean up whatever needed to be cleaned up, and make sure that everything was noted on the plan and done accordingly. So, really, what this is, is just a pretty much a final overview of what's going to happen, and now what we're going to do is, we're just going to vote on those waivers that have been submitted to us.
And they all have met the planning board approval?
Yes. Well, they have, well, that's the thing, we got to prove them that.
What I'm saying is, they met the conditions.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, exactly.
They met, they met the...
So, for what has to happen first, you have to have the waivers, we're going to put a motion on the waivers to approve them. Then you're going to do a final approval on the conditions of approval.
Fine.
Okay. All right, so, finding that the applicant has met the requirements, I'm going to entertain a motion to act on the submitted waiver requests. um, I'm gonna entertain a motion, um, to act on the submitted waiver requests as follows. Section one-two-zero-point-one-point-one A Traffic Impact Study. Section one-two-point, uh, section one-two-zero-point-one-point-one B Internal Circulation Plan. Section one-five-five-point-four-point-one Site-Specific Soil Map for the site. Section one-two-zero-point-four Drainage. Section one-two-zero-point-one-three-point-three Building Orientation. Section one-two-zero-point-one-three-point-six Roof Forms and Materials. And section one-five-five-point-nine Maintenance and Inspection Recording of Documents With Deed.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Who made the motion?
Joe. Alright, I have a motion and a second, um, discussion. Hearing none. All those, uh, in favor of acting on the submitted waiver, waiver requests, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained. Motion passes five-zero-zero. So that is complete. The waivers have been, um, acted upon and approved by this board.
Thank you.
So, the next piece of business, oh, I'm sorry, yes, Jen.
I would just say, if you have any public input before you act on the actual application, you might wanna open and see if anyone has.
Is there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Um, we're gonna open this up to public input.
Absolutely.
Hearing none, I'm going to close the public input. And we will move now to the, um, conditional approval.
Conditional use permit would be the next, and then the approval.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're right. So next is the conditional use permit request for the increased, uh, impervious surface. I need a motion to, um, from this board to act on the, uh, request. Do I have such a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, act on the request.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained. Motion passes five-zero-zero. Now we can move to the, the, the best part of the evening, right?
I think I'm gonna have to be a little stickler on that. You just voted to act on the conditional, conditional use permit. You didn't vote to approve the conditional use permit. I think you should have a motion that says, I approve, I would let, make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, then you can have your discussion, then you can vote.
I think that's what he meant to say.
I think so too, I think so too, when he said act.
He said act on, but maybe, maybe approval would've been.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
Alright, there's a motion to approve the conditional use permit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
You take another, you didn't another vote?
Yes.
They weren't doing the vote yet.
We're doing it for real this time, this time with feeling.
Not congress.
Alright, all those, um, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained. Motion passes five-zero-zero.
Thank you. Now you can get to a good part of it.
Alright, the next item is the conditions of approval.
Okay, fine, I'll make a motion.
Do you have something?
To approve.
Okay, well.
Since I'm so reserved.
Alright.
I don't have a.
I'm moved to approve it.
Is the conditional use permit on electronically?
Um, the conditional use permit?
Yeah, I don't think I have it. And the added, um, waivers.
They're, they're in the different, the initial use permit application is in the original application, C E F.
Okay.
As are the first batch of waivers.
I have the first batch waived, I don't have the last three.
The second batch of waivers came in with the app, the letter. So it's, um, if you're looking at the second batch of, looking at the document there, uh, it is, the file is applicant twelve-one-seventeen letter and additional waivers.
Okay, thank you.
And just so, um, I know we have a motion to, um, approve, the, um, I just wanna go through the conditional approval, um, information. Um, that would include, uh, plan copies with professional seals and signatures. The original Mylar with professional seals and signatures. The electronic submission per regulations as built as required. All fees paid and escrow maintained as required. Uh, changes to plan as detailed in the minutes and this report. And those would include the adding of hydrants to sheet zero-one, if they fall within the drawing extents. Uh, dependent on this discussion, obviously the post-gravel area, um, we did, we talked about that, so that's not any issue. Correct business name on all pages of the drainage analysis and inspection and maintenance manual. Add plan revision dates to sheet, uh, D R one. Correct numbering of notes on sheet zero-one. Add stone check, are, are those included in the plan? I noticed you said you have it missing, but.
Which?
Missing six-nine-eleven.
Yes.
Have those, those have been added, right?
No.
No, the, the sequence is out of order now, so I just need to resequence it.
Yeah.
Alright, so that will be, okay.
Yeah.
Are you reading from the staff report or the Google site?
I'm reading from the report that was submitted.
Go from the Google site.
Things have changed.
Cause that merged in Lou's couple items that were just housekeeping. And it also removed the bit about parking.
Okay.
I edited on the fly here as you discussed this evening.
I see.
It's only slightly different from the staff report.
There's only one additional comment that was.
Yeah.
It's the top one, the staff review? No. Twelve.
No.
Twelve fourteen?
Go up, the bullets, go up, roll up, there you go.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Michael, one, one correction, I don't need a Mylar.
You don't need a Mylar?
Doesn't get recorded.
Okay, that's fine.
I was gonna ask about that, thank you.
Okay, so let's remove that one.
Alright, let's see, alright, so, um.
Do over?
Do a.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Refresh your browser.
My motion includes all of that. What's on the browser?
We're gonna read it.
We understand. We have to make sure that it gets, gets out there, okay. Thank you. Plan copies with professional seals and signatures, the original Mylar with professional seals and signatures.
Not that.
But.
Not that, actually.
No, no Mylar.
Well, no Mylar. Electronic submission per regulations as built as required. All fees paid and escrow maintained as required. Add hydrants to sheet zero-one. Correct business name on all pages of the drainage analysis and inspection and maintenance manual. Uh, add plan revision dates to sheet D R one. Uh, the correct numbering of notes on sheet zero-one, missing six-nine-eleven. Add stone check dam and gravel area shading symbols to legend on sheet D R one and C one. Add a construction detail for the paved drive on sheet C one. Add a note that the sixteen foot gravel road that runs behind the building shall meet, um, N A, NFPA.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna edit that one.
Okay.
Just say that the gravel road shall meet the standard and accommodate and they, uh, meet, uh, support the sixty-four. Cause you got the sixteen foot wide and you got the twelve foot wide, so just make it simple and say that it can support the, the fire apparatus.
So add a note that the sixteen, uh, foot gravel road, um, that will support the fire apparatus. Uh, add date of waiver approval to sheet zero-one, note fifteen.
You missed, expand note six.
Yeah, I, I, okay, expand note six on sheet C one to note that the septic system is to be removed.
You've got the permit number in there, but then you're gonna take the, the septic out.
Right, okay.
So if the, if the septic's removed.
Oh, yeah.
Then what's the permit for?
Uh, just to show, for existing information.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make sure that they don't build that building on top of that septic.
Thank you. Add date of waiver approval to sheet zero-one, note fifteen. On sheet zero-one, note fifteen, correct referenced waiver section number one-two-zero-point-one-point-one A Traffic Impact Study. And one-two-zero-point-one-point-one B Internal Circulation Plan. Probably both are missing from the second one, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I had point one, no, point one, point one.
Okay, alright, I got you, alright.
I know what you're saying.
Very good. Um, expand the note nineteen on sheet zero-one to add the impact fee breakdown to follow the total amount due. Obtain street address from Deputy Chief Douglas Nickel before the building permit is issued, conditions subsequent. Alright, with all that said.
What the chairman said. That's my motion.
With all, with all that said, those are the conditions of approval. We have a motion to approve the conditions of approval.
I second the motion.
And we have a second. Do we have discussion?
Joan, you second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hearing none. All in favor of, um, conditional approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained. Motion passes five-zero-zero. And that, I believe, is it.
Merry Christmas to you too.
The conditions are in your email.
The, not, not the one that, obviously it's slightly different than what we got.
What, what they just read.
Yeah, you sent me an email that little while, just now, just now.
Just now. That's the one.
So it still needs to get written notice of decision, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, usually you guys.
It's, it's just a courtesy, here's what.
Yeah, absolutely. How many pa- one paper copy of the stamped signed plans, paper?
About, uh, four paper copies.
Four paper copies. And by that, do you also need four copies of the drainage analysis?
No, no.
Okay.
Did you submit that final one to Lou? Are you talking about the drainage, the stormwater management plan?
The, yeah, the stuff that Lou got.
I don't need, I don't really need that, the stormwater.
Yes, you do.
I do? Okay.
You needed a copy.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Well, weren't you given a copy and isn't it in the file? But then, I guess this will be the final.
Yeah, we, we got the version with the wrong name.
Okay.
Is Joan at their maintenance?
Okay, that's what I was looking for, yeah.
Uh, I think I do.
Very good, thank you very much.
Alright, well, thank you very much, and, um, wish you a merry Christmas and best of luck.
Was not here Hudson also.
You work at a Hudson also?
Who? I don't know, I've been for the number phone.
Alrighty. Moving on. Committee reports. Are there any reports from any committees?
Thought I said something.
Correspondent?
Oh, before we even get to that, um. Jen, did you wanna talk about the, um, application, NRPC?
Sure. Um, I put this up there as an other business item, um, assuming we can call that this part of the agenda. Uh, so NRPC was, was asked by DES to submit a grant application, um, to their source water protection program. And what, what they're looking to do is have some folks pilot, um, some work to, per, you know, looking at protecting source water, uh, source water, so drinking water supplies. Uh, the, what they're particularly looking at are, um, hazardous, hazardous waste storage facilities that might be within proximity to a surface water body. Uh, and what are some ways that we can potentially mitigate, uh, a failure of one of those facilities that could lead to, uh, contaminants reaching, in this case, the Merrimack River, uh, that could then pollute, uh, water supplies. Uh, so we, we said sure, it was kind of a, a last minute request that came to us to put in this grant application. Um, so we kind of rushed to put in the grant application. You do have, uh, in, I posted under other business, an email from Sarah Scavitch in our office, who, she's the one who put this application, uh, and materials together. And so you've got her email to, that she sent to, uh, to Mike, she was sent it, I believe, to the selectmen Troy and Joan. Just to kind of put it out there to Litchfield to see if the town is interested in, um, in either supporting. It'd be work that we are doing at NRPC. Ultimately, part of what is proposed is to put together, um, s- some of these tools. It would likely be, um, a model regulation. And so they're looking to see that there's, there are municipalities that might be interested in at least looking at it and considering it. Um, so I've posted Sarah's letter of introduction and the grant application. Uh, I don't know that you need to necessarily do anything tonight, but if you had had a chance to read this and you're like, yes, Litchfield should, um, at least, you know, participate and figure out what's going on, if there's anything potentially of interest. She is looking for, uh, municipal letters of support, uh, to say that, you know, there's interest on the ground. So, that's, that's where it is at.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Only, uh, issue I have is that on page two of seventeen of the email that I got, completed applications must be submitted to DES by November first.
Yeah.
Twenty seventeen.
No, so the deadline was extended, I do know that. Um, and then beyond that, um, because this was something where DES kind of reached out to us, um, we, they said just get us letters of support when you have a chance to get us letters of support. So the application actually has already been submitted to DES. Um, the application deadline has already passed. Uh, what they're looking for is if there, you know, is, if there is municipal support, we still need to get that in. So from our end, it was definitely a gamble to throw something together and invest the time into a grant application that we didn't have a chance to talk to municipa- municipalities about and see if our communities would even be interested in doing this, um, so.
So do all of the members of the planning board have the seventeen page document that I, okay?
Yeah, yeah, it's there.
Yeah, did she send it to other municipalities?
Um, she has sent it to Merrimack. She's actually been focusing her efforts on Merrimack because, quite frankly, um, there are not a lot of hazardous waste facilities in Litchfield that could potentially impact the Merrimack River. Um, it's, Merrimack, on the other hand, there is definitely significantly more, um, particularly a lot the Ruth Re Corridor. So she's been focusing her, trying to coordinate with Merrimack. Um, and they have been, you know, this time of year, their agenda has been extremely busy at both the town council level and the planning board level, so this has not been scheduled to go, um, on an agenda for discussion. So she said, well, let's reach out to Litchfield, see if they're interested. Uh, but arguably, you know, there is less here in Litchfield that could potentially have a hazardous impact, um, so.
But like you said, we should probably look at this.
Take a look, read through it.
Yeah, I mean, it's something to consider.
Diffuse it for a subsequent.
Yes, yeah. But if you, uh, if the planning board or the selectmen wanted to, to say, yes, uh, you know, Litchfield should participate.
Yeah, we just got this, so.
Yes, exactly. She and I just discussed this yesterday. She immediately sent it to you, uh, to everyone. And what I told her is that because you guys were meeting tonight, we could bring it up under, um, other business and just introduce it.
And if, I mean, if the board of selectmen is interested in this and they would like, you know, a letter of support or something, I'd be happy to, you know, as a member of the planning board, you know, work with Jen to facilitate that. But like again, you guys review it, see what you think, and we'll, you know, we'll table it.
Okay, I'll bring it back.
Okay.
Would DES consider it from our, our last meeting?
That is a very good question. I can ask Sarah.
Bring that up.
Yeah.
No, I understand.
You know. Last meeting, yeah.
Okay.
I wonder who monitors fertilizer from the board?
I don't know. There are some exemptions there.
That's a no.
Yeah.
So, no committee reports, anybody? The lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee did meet this on December fourteenth at Nashville Public Library. Not much to report. Basically, it was just a general meeting. There was no site plan applications or anything, or permits that had to be reviewed. Approval of the December fifth, 2017 minutes. Do we have copies of those minutes? And anybody have any questions about those minutes? And I can entertain a motion to have them approved, if someone wants to do that.
Well, so a motion to approve the minutes?
Alright, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 4-0-1. Okay. Any other business? Home occupation renewal?
Yeah, I have a renewal that came in, that this person decided to restart their business, so I told her if there were absolutely no changes, she could just put it in as a renewal. And she did that.
Okay.
And I think I put it on the site, did I?
Are we voting on this? Is this...
Yes.
Okay.
Joan, did I hear you say, sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, that's alright, go ahead.
There are no changes in the application?
Right, it's the dog grooming at, for Jessica McQuestion, she's hours of operation are nine to three, Tuesday to Saturday, one hundred fifty-nine square feet.
Where is that?
Right in part of the, one of the barns, the barn that's closest to the road. She had been approved previous and then she was out of business for two or three years, and now she's back.
Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion to approve the home occupation renewal of Jessica McQuest.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained. Motion passes 5-0-0. Anything else, Jen?
No.
Alright, then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Do I have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained. Motion passes 5-0-0. Want to wish everyone out there Merry Christmas and a wonderful 2018, and we'll see you back here in 2018. Good night.